Good evening and welcome to the 1,186th Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council after holding their own public hearing will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
President.
Mrs. McHugh.
Here.
Mr. Bajero is not here. Mr. Long.
Is here.
Mr. Ventura is not here. Karen Magno is here. Chairman Wilshow.
Is here, thank you. Also with us tonight we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. And for the folks in our audience, the format of the meeting is that we will start by calling each of the items that's on the agenda that you may have in front of you. We'll get background information on the item from our planning staff, and then we'll ask that the petitioner come forward and speak to their item, answer questions that we may have. And then we'll have an opportunity for anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak for or against a petition to also come forward and give us their opinions and views. So with that, after all that's done, then we'll of course make our decision on the item. And I do want to, before we get started, I do want to thank Mr. Long, our Vice Chairman, and Carol Smiley for filling in for us last week and running the meeting and doing secretarial duties. So thank you both. And with that, Mr. Secretary, if we're ready for item number one on our agenda.
Petition 2022-02-02-04 submitted by Shake Shack of Michigan LLC requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.03 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance to utilize an SDM liquor license, which is the sale of packaged beer and wine products for consumption off the premises in conjunction with the operation of a Class C liquor license, sale of beer, wine, and spirits for consumption on the premises. Previously approved for the subject property pursuant to Council Resolution Number 228-93 in connection with the operation of a new freestanding restaurant at 39,300 Seven Mile Road located at the northeast corner of Seven Mile Road and Hagerty Roads in the southwest quarter of Section 6.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. This is a request to utilize an SDM liquor license that would allow for the sale of packaged beer and wine products for consumption off the premises. This proposed SDM license would be done in conjunction with a Class C liquor license at the recently opened Shake Shack Restaurant, which is at the corner of Seven Mile and Hagerty Roads. The zoning of the property is C2 general business. This site was approved for a Class C license in 1993 when it was originally developed as Romano's Macaroni Grill. No special requirements or conditions were imposed by the city at that time, thus the waiver carried over to Shake Shack allowing it to operate a Class C license at this location without the need to go back through the process. However, this 1993 approval does not apply to the requested SDM license and is the reason why they're before us this evening. Section 6.03 of the zoning ordinance specifies that no SDM licensed establishment shall be within 500 feet of an existing SDM licensed business. There are no SDM licensed businesses within 500 feet of this Shake Shack. Additionally, that same section of the ordinance specifies that SDM licensed establishments must be located at least 400 feet from any church or school, and again, no churches or schools, places of worship are located within 400 feet of the proposed restaurant. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be pleased to read out the correspondence on this item.
Yes, please.
We have a letter from the Engineering Division dated March 3rd indicating that the existing building is currently serviced by public water main and sanitary sewer as well as private storm sewer. It should be noted that the developer may be required to obtain a permit from the Wayne County Department of Public Services should any work occur within the Seven Mile or Hagerty Road rights of way. That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter of no objection coming from our fire, Livonia Fire and Rescue. That letter again is dated March 3rd, and it's signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. Next, a letter of no objection coming from the Traffic Bureau dated March 10th and signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant. Next is a letter from, also from the Division of Police dated March 24th that reads, "We reviewed the plans submitted by Shake Shack Michigan LLC in conjunction with the operation of a new freestanding full-service restaurant, Shake Shack, at 39,300 Seven Mile Road located on the northeast corner of Seven Mile and Hagerty in the southwest quarter of Section 6. After reviewing the plans with the Chief of Police, we have no objections to the waiver being granted contingent that the petitioner complies with all state laws, city ordinances, stipulations and conditions set by the Livonia Police Department Liquor Investigation Unit as approved by the Chief of Police, and stipulations and conditions set by the Traffic Bureau of the Livonia Police Department." That letter is signed by Jeffrey Ronaine, Special Services Bureau. A letter of no objection coming from the Inspection Department dated April 1st and signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. A letter from the city's Chief Accountant, Connie Campula, dated March 14th indicating that there are unpaid water and sewer charges in the amount of $381.54. And lastly, a letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer dated March 9th and signed by Linda Sheil, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. And that is the extended correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Do we have any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any questions. Our petitioner's representative is here. If you want to come forward, and we'll start the meeting by asking that you give us your name and address for our record.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Wilshow, Patrick Howe, Attorney for Shake Shack Michigan LLC. Thank you for having me tonight. As mentioned by Mr. Toramina, Shake Shack has recently opened, brand-new store. It's off to a great start, and they would like to offer on-premise consumption of alcohol, which is permitted by right as described, and with the wave of delivery services, they'd like to offer beer and wine to-go. So that would be the reason we're here for a waiver use request. And that would be both takeaway, so if you go in, order your meal, and you want a few cans of beer or a bottle of wine to-go, that would be available to you. Or through any of the modern delivery services that they offer, beer and wine could be ordered through various different platforms and delivered by a person trained in the proper service of alcohol. So there's a mechanism for that through the Liquor Commission with a third-party facilitator. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. This service of beer and wine to-go would fit with their other operations in Michigan, which are in Detroit, Troy, Rochester Hills, and Ann Arbor. So thank you for your support tonight and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Howe. We'll see if we have any questions. Ms. Smiley?
I understand, good evening. I understand you say that the other restaurants, Shake Shacks have this?
They do.
Yeah, the other ones in Michigan. And then you said that you're not liable, like, to check, you know, when it's being delivered. Who delivers your food and what kind of, do you know, is it no longer your responsibility?
So our employees could deliver food under the state law with beer and wine, or we can engage a third-party facilitator that's licensed by the Liquor Commission, and they fall under their jurisdiction and oversight, so they have to be trained in the proper service of alcohol through a tips or serve-safe program. And so they would, you know, make sure that the order is accurate when it leaves the building, and then they match the person that ordered it to the person at the door and check ID, and they have to report back.
Okay.
Keep all records on that. So pretty much every restaurant I license these days gets an SDM license. It's just a part of the process for restaurants, whether it's a fine dining restaurant that offers takeout, or a quick-service restaurant that has delivery, it's just part of a restaurant's operation with a real increase in delivery.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioner's representative? Mr. Long?
Thank you. And I know we talked about this at the study meeting, but since all of the other Michigan stores do this, but this wasn't requested at the initial startup of this location, can you talk about why that, why this wasn't brought to us all at the same time?
I don't have a great answer. It was missed by the initial site plan permitting team. I was brought in after the fact, and I was identified, I think, you know, we didn't need a waiver use for the Class C because it sort of grandfathered, and I think it was assumed by somebody that the beer/wine take-away was also grandfathered. That was revealed to not be the case, and so we filed right away, and here we are. You know, just indicative also, this isn't their main business. I mean, their main business is grape milkshakes, burgers, hot dogs, fries. So this is an accessory component. They're open and operating without alcohol, and this would kind of complete the package.
So this'll clean it all up and get you in line with all the other stores in Michigan?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
You just talked a moment ago about your hamburgers and shakes and burgers and what percentage is the beer and wine, either inside or carry-out, sales of the business? And obviously, you don't have it here, but you have other stores. What is the percentage of alcohol sales?
Don't quote me on this, but I'd say it's less than 5%, you know? Maybe on a higher-volume store with more alcohol, it's 5% to 10%, but I'd say it's less than 5%.
And how does this store compare with the others in Michigan as far as business? Is it busier? Is it low-end, mid-range, high-end? What, how does it compare?
I visited the store, you know, I was there before it opened. I visited there last week just to drive by, and it's quite a drive-through operation. So in my personal opinion, I'm a lawyer, not a business guy, it's going to be real high volume with takeout. With that said, you can't buy alcohol through the drive-through. So if you want alcohol, you need to come, and that's the state law, you have to come into the store and take it away. So there will be no alcohol through the drive-through. So I think, you know, with this traffic pattern and intersection and office traffic, they're going to do a great business with drive-through without alcohol. And otherwise, with all the retail around it, I think it's going to do great for dining as well. Very large outdoor patio, which would be licensed as well for on-premise consumption. So yeah, I think it's a great location. They're really excited to be here, and this would finish it off.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Just to dovetail off of some of Mr. Karen Magno's questions, I do believe the drive-through component is fairly new for Shake Shack. I don't think they, I think this is sort of a new concept, or fairly new for them.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is one of the few locations that has drive-through at this point. But one of the questions that was asked was about the percentage of sales. Just to give a broader picture, what percentage of, do you know what percentage of stores in the chain serve alcohol nationwide?
My understanding, all where it's permitted and not cost prohibitive. So, you know, we're buying a license. It's a pretty significant investment. I think it's around $60,000, $70,000 for this license, so it's very important to them. With that said, there's only a handful of beverages on the menu. I mean, two to five beers at a time and two to three wines at a time. So it's not a huge selection, but it's rotated. They sometimes offer local, you know, craft products or something that, you know, they kind of steer through their flagship out of New York. They're based in New York, so they'll bring in some type of Brooklyn Lager or something like that. So wherever it's permitted and not cost prohibitive, they like to offer this.
Okay, so I think it's probably safe to say that this is not the exception to the rule? This is more normal for them?
This is in line, yes, exactly.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other questions from anyone on this petition? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anybody coming forward. Thank you, Mr. Howe.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion, I'm going to close the public hearing, and the motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that the request to utilize an SDM liquor license, sale of packaged beer and wine products for consumption off the premises in connection with the operation of a freestanding full-service restaurant, Shake Shack, at 39,300 Seven Mile Road, is hereby approved for the following reasons, subject to City Council approval and the following conditions. Number one, that the subject site has the capacity to accommodate the proposed use. Number two, that the use of an SDM liquor license will complement the existing use of the subject property and will provide an additional service to customers. And number three, this waiver use is granted to this petitioner only, and any new user of this property is required to seek and receive City Council's consent to such users operating the subject facility prior to occupancy by such user.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Long, supported by Mrs. McHugh. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Karen Magno votes aye. Chairman Wilshow.
Votes aye, and the motion passes. We'll go to City Council on approving recommendation. Good luck. Thank you. And I believe that now takes us to item number two on our agenda. Mr. Secretary?
Petition 2022-03-02-05 submitted by the Rose Entertainment Venue LLC requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.51 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance to operate a full-service restaurant at 27494 Grand River Avenue located on the north side of Grand River between Inkster and Eight Mile Roads in the northeast quarter of Section 1.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Due to a business relationship I have with one of the parties involved in the transaction, in order to remove any bad appearances, I will be recusing myself from Items 2 and 3 on tonight's agenda.
Understood, and we'll have that noted in our minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll have it noted that Mr. Long has stepped down from the dais, and we go to Mr. Toramina for our background.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request to operate a full-service restaurant with live entertainment and outdoor seating. This property is at the southwest corner of Inkster and Eight Mile Roads. The property is roughly two acres in size. It has 314 feet of frontage on Eight Mile Road, 256 feet of frontage on Inkster Road, and 300 feet of frontage along Grand River Avenue. As you can see from this zoning map, the site is Zone C2 General Business. The property contains a 22,800-square-foot commercial building that is currently divided into three units. The proposed restaurant, which measures roughly 10,000 square feet, would occupy the space that is in the center of the building. The current plans show seating for a total of 166 persons, including 138 interior seats and 28 outdoor patio seats. The floor plan shows a dining area with a movable stage surrounded by tables, chairs, and booths, also shown as a coatroom, a bar, office, restrooms, kitchen, and entertainer's lounge, as well as three dressing rooms. In terms of the outdoor seating, there are two dining patios shown along the west side of the building. One is, one on either side of the main customer entrance. Both of these patios would be enclosed with fencing as well as planters, although the plans do not provide any details on the enclosure. If alcoholic beverages are to be served on these patios, they must be fully enclosed with fencing and accessible directly from inside the restaurant. The current plans do not show how this would be accomplished. The petitioner is proposing to offer live entertainment, and it was described to be in form of comedy, poetry, and music. Section 6.14 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to dance halls and ballrooms specifies that these types of establishments cannot be located within 300 feet of any residential district or church. No homes or houses of worship exist within 300 feet of the subject site. The proposed hours of operation would be from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Monday through Friday, and then 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Sunday and Saturday. For parking, required for restaurants is one space for each two interior seats, one space for each three outdoor patio seats, and one space for each employee. With 138 interior seats, 28 outdoor patio seats, and at least 20 employees, the use would require a total of 100 parking spaces. The building's other two units, because they are commercial in nature, require parking based on a ratio of one space for each 150 square feet of usable floor space. Combined, the other units would require 67 parking spaces, and together, the proposed restaurant plus the two other units require 167 parking spaces. The submitted site plan shows 111 available parking spaces, resulting in a deficiency of approximately 58 parking spaces. Access to the site would not be changed. Currently, there are three driveways, one along Eight Mile, one on Inkster, as well as one on Grand River. The site plan shows only one enclosed dumpster area that would be across the building's south elevation. No details are provided as to the construction materials or the height of the proposed enclosure. For site lighting, the plans do not indicate any information. However, the elevation renderings do show large roof-mounted floodlights. The property contains very little green space or landscaping. The plan shows two nude trees in the landscaped islands on the west side of the site. In addition, a semicircular planting bed is shown on the east side of the building within the right-of-way of Inkster Road. Other than signage, the petitioner is not proposing any changes to the exterior of the building. Signage has not been evaluated with this petition. One or possibly two wall signs would be allowed, the size of which is determined by the amount of frontage of the restaurant. The site is not allowed a ground sign due to the fact that the building is deficient in its front yard setback. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read out the correspondence on this.
Yes, please.
We have a letter from the Engineering Division. It's dated March 11th, and it reads, "The existing building is currently serviced by public water main and sanitary sewer as well as private storm sewer. According to the proposed plans, there should not be impacts to the sanitary sewer or water main. It should be noted that the developer may be required to obtain a permit from the Road Commission for Oakland County or the Michigan Department of Transportation should any work occur within the Eight Mile Road or Grand River Avenue rights of way." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter that is from the Livonia Fire and Rescue dated March 31st, and it reads, "We have no objections to the proposal with the following stipulations. The owner must bring suppression and fire alarm system up to code, provide another means of egress to the outside. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." And that letter is signed by Brian Kokla, Senior Fire Inspector. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police dated March 17th and is signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter also from the Division of Police dated April 1st that reads, "We have reviewed the plans submitted by the Rose Entertainment Venue LLC requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Sections 6.22 and 6.51 of the Livonia Vision zoning ordinance to operate a full-service restaurant and to utilize a Class C liquor license, sale of beer, wine, and spirits for consumption on the premises at 27494 Grand River Avenue located on the north side of Grand River between Inkster and Eight Mile Roads in the northeast quarter of Section 1. The review of the plans determined that the request does not comply with the separation requirement guidelines. El Nibbluk at 277258 Mile, 690 feet, and Mulligan's Pub, 274068 Mile, 300 feet, both hold an active Class C liquor license and are well within the 1,000-foot separation requirement distance of the proposed site. In addition, we also noted that there is no direct access to the interior of the building from the outdoor patio. We would recommend that the Planning Commission and City Council maintain separation requirement guidelines. It is our opinion that these guidelines are good for local establishment, establishment businesses, and maintain Livonia's family atmosphere." That letter is signed by Jeffrey Ronaine, Special Services Bureau. Next is a letter from the Inspection Department dated April 1st that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed, and the following is noted. Number one, the proposed plan is a change of use and would require a full set of plans and documents, documents, excuse me, prepared by a licensed design professional to be submitted for review. This would require that the proposed space must conform to all current barrier-free codes, building codes, and all mechanical codes and standards. This will be addressed further at time of plan review if the project moves forward. Number two, the drawing only shows one conforming egress door. This would limit the occupancy to a maximum of 49 persons. Number three, the proposed petition appears to be an assembly use. A2, per the Michigan Building Code, this will require the space to have fire suppression system, fire alarm, and fire-rated barriers installed between adjacent spaces to code. Number four, parking would be deficient with this use. The deficiency would require variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This department has no further objections to this petition." And that letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next is a letter from the Department of Finance that reads, "I have reviewed the addresses connected with the above noted petitions, including 27488 Grand River, 27494 Grand River, and 27500 Grand River. The following amounts are due to the City of Livonia. Unpaid water and sewer charges, 27488 Grand River, in the amount of $141.33. Unpaid water and sewer charges, 27500 Grand River, in the amount of $249.71. Total due to the City of Livonia, $391.04. Please contact me if you have any further questions." And that letter is signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. Next is a letter coming from the Office of the Treasurer, which was revised on April 4th, and it reads, "In accordance with your request, the Treasurer's Office has reviewed the name and addresses connected with the above noted petition. At this time, there appears to be no delinquent taxes due, therefore, I have no objections to the proposal. I say appears as the amount shown as due was through March 31st, the payment was made on April 1st. It is a Wayne County decision on if there will be additional interest due. 2021 real property summer and winter taxes, summer bill issued on July 1st, 2021, and winter bill issued on December 1st, 2021, in the amount of $29,957.29, paid on April 1st, 2022 to the Wayne County Treasurer. Additional information, the 2020 real property summer and winter taxes were just paid in full to the Wayne County Treasurer on March 1st, 2022, in the amount of $32,577.58. Real property taxes have not been paid on time to the City of Livonia since the 2018 winter tax bill." That letter is signed by Linda Sheil, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. And lastly, we have an email correspondence that was received this evening, Tuesday, December 12th, that reads, "To whom it may concern, this email is regarding the new venue, Rose Entertainment, who will be located at 27494 Grand River. We are a franchise Wendy's located at 27526 Grand River, Livonia, Michigan. The franchise owner is concerned about this new venue having enough parking. How many parking spaces will be available for your customers? Due to us having limited space for our customers, we do not want any overflow of your customers' parking on our property. Please advise. Thank you." And that email is from a Felicia Hurd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? Ms. Smiley, sure.
Did I understand that they said because of this change of use, the capacity would be 49 people?
Well, that is the Inspection Department's very cursory review of the information that they have available at this time, and it's based on, I'm sure, the fact that there was only one egress point shown to the building. Or the location and spacing between the egress doorways.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good question. Any other questions for our planning staff? If not, I believe our petitioner is in the audience. You're welcome to come to our podium. Good evening. We want to welcome you to our meeting and ask that you start with your name and address for our record.
Johnny Adams, 28147 East Calone Circle, Southfield, Michigan, 48034.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Is there anything else that you'd like to present to us from what you've already heard?
We got, Barry just gave me a pay receipt for the water for $249.71.
Okay.
And I got the tax bill right here. Oh, that's water, that's water, too. For 100 and, well, that's just the same thing, $249.71.
Okay, that's taken care of.
I wasn't able to acquire any additional parking spaces. I solicited the places around, and they're acquiring at this moment.
Okay.
And I still got some people standing. They will kind of get back with me, but as of this moment, I haven't acquired it.
Okay.
And then fires, fires expression system, I did talk to a guy, but he wouldn't be able to come out until May the 19th, he said.
Okay.
To actually check it.
All right, excellent. And I know that we did have quite a discussion at our study meeting regarding your petition, so I appreciate you following up on some of those items that we talked about at that meeting. Let me see if there's any questions from our commission- Let me see if there's any questions from our commission for you, and you can answer some of those. Ms. Smiley?
Yes, my question, good evening. My question is about the capacity, because I understood you to have more of an entertainment venue that would, you said, 300 to 400 people.
Yeah, we would need to have more people. That's why I was trying to solicit to get extra parking, since you guys only, like I said, Barry and the tenant, they wrote off their parking for us, to give us that. I sent that with the
Initial plans.
Initial plans. And Barry said he don't need any parking, and then the tenant people said they only needed 10 park, I mean, six parking spaces, because they do appointments only. So, and so only two people work there.
Okay.
So.
But you're not even close. I mean, and especially, I'm looking at 138 capacity, and you want to actually do three times that.
Right.
So your parking would be probably three times.
I'm still out of whack, yeah.
That's a, I think you're at a nonstarter. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioner?
And I apologize, because I was not here last week, so I'm probably repeating, but talk to me a little bit about the fire suppression system and what your plan is.
What, they asked me to make sure it's up to code and make sure it's working and make sure it's compatible for the capacity of the space that patrons are going to have. So, because they don't know if it was made for that capacity.
Right.
So that's why I was going to have the person come out on the 19th to check it and let me know.
Which is going along with what our fire department had recommended to be.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Care Magna.
Good evening. It seems to me that there's quite a separation between what you want to do and where we're at tonight for, as you're looking for an approval here.
Correct.
There were, there were a lot of things. Parking was a problem, fire suppression was a problem, capacity and exit egress doors on this, on this property was a problem. I think there were some signage issues, and I don't think you're quite ready for this moment tonight without having more answers for us, as it's, for me personally, it's virtually impossible to, to offer an approval without any answers here. So, I just want to let you know that's where I'm at with it.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Care Magna. Any other questions or comments from our petitioner? Ms. Smiley?
Yeah, I agree totally with this other commissioner, Mr. Care Magna. I, I understand your dream, and I understand you have experience, but this is a, is a very bad location or a bad venue. You don't have anywhere to go from, I mean, I'm just looking at the capa, I mean, I don't want you putting a lot of money and energy in something that you can't make bigger or you can't, you can't possibly get.
Yeah, because the parking is, from what you guys said, the code is, the parking is my issue. I won't be able to have the capacity of parking spaces for
Yeah.
patrons that I'm trying to acquire.
And can you get that many people in this venue?
Yeah, we can get that in there, but
Have you explored some other venues?
Huh?
Have you explored some other locations?
Not really, just, just this one, because I thought it was perfect. It was centrally located around everything, but the parking is, from what you guys say, is going to hinder me.
Yeah.
Because it's going to affect the passengers.
I would agree.
Right, right, because if I can't get 300 people in there, I can't pay rent.
Well, that's what you said, to get the entertainment and to create your dream, you're going to have to have a completely different setting.
Yes.
Sorry, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions or comments? And just, just a question to kind of, kind of dovetail off of the parking issue, Mr. Adams. Is it safe to assume that based on the nature of this business, being a place that people go for entertainment, concerts, music, and comedy shows and so on, that you're going to have a fair number of your patrons that are going to come to this location either individually in a car or perhaps maybe two people in a car? It's not going to be, you know, a carload of four or five people typically, so you're going to have a lot of individuals showing up needing more parking essentially, right?
Yeah, that could be possible, because, I mean, like, sometimes you get two people, sometimes you get one, sometimes you get three, sometimes you get two couples in a car, so, there's really no way of knowing, but the more parking, the better.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Right, because I'm thinking, you know, I know a lot of people like to meet each other at, at a place like this, and then they hang out and, you know, enjoy themselves, or couples come, you know?
I solicit the two place right directly across the street. I solicit the
School.
The school.
Grand River Academy.
Grand River Academy. I'm still waiting on the superintendent to call me. They was on summer break last week, spring break last week, wherever they located in the state that superintendent is in, and he hasn't got back with me yet. I solicited the pawn shop across the street on the other side. I solicited the liquor store, I think it's Billy's Liquor Store.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I solicited him, but he said he's in the process of trying to do something, so, he said, "They're not going to let you use me because I'm trying to do something myself," so.
Right, right, we've worked with him.
I even went down the street, like a block down, and solicited the, it's a beauty salon, a beauty, a beauty school. I solicited them, you know what I'm saying? I'm still waiting for the actual owner to get back with me, so, I mean, I did my due diligence.
Definitely, sounds like you have, and we appreciate that, and I do agree with the other comments that have been made, that if you're looking to have 300 or 400 seats, which we didn't even evaluate that for parking requirements, you're not even meeting the parking requirements for the 130-some
Correct.
seats, if you expand this to 300 or 400, it's really going to be
But that's due to because you guys changed the ordinance since the first of the year or something?
Right, recently. But we, we've, we've certainly always had parking standards in the community even, even before that, that would require a fair number of parking spots that you're deficient in, so I don't know that it would have even worked either way.
Yeah, because I, like I said, I did my due diligence. I went to a few bars around there, and I saw one place had 99 posted on there, capacity, but they only had 27 seats, 27 parking spaces. Another one had 101, they only had 40 parking spaces, and then that hookah bar I went to, they only got four parking spaces, so, and they capacity say 89, so. So, what I'm saying, that's why I said
So did y'all use the same standard with them to come up with the parking spaces, to determine the capacity?
It would depend on the use of the property as to what the parking standards are. Different types of businesses require different amounts of parking, but also when those businesses were approved. They may have been grandfathered from many, many years ago, they may have been under the previous ordinance, or they could be under the current ordinance, so it's hard for us to answer that question
Oh, okay.
right here for you. But is there any other questions or comments from anyone on the commission? If not, I'm going to see if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this. If so, you're welcome to come forward. I don't see anybody coming forward. Is there any other comments that you'd like to make?
No, that's it.
Mr. Adams, Mrs. Adams?
No.
All right, you're good? All right, well, in that case, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask for a motion. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Smiley.
I think I'm going to have to make a denying resolution that the request to operate a full-service restaurant with live entertainment and outdoor seating at 27494 Grand River Avenue is hereby denied for the following reasons: That the petitioner failed to affirmatively show that the proposed use complies with all special and general waiver use standards and requirements as set forth in Section 3.11 and 6.51 of Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance; that too many issues remain unresolved, including fire safety, patio access, parking, signage, landscaping, exterior lighting, and the site conditions such as repairs to the parking lot; that the site lacks the capacity to handle the increase in intensity associated with the intended amount of seating of the proposed restaurant, and would therefore be detrimental to and not in harmony with the character of the surrounding neighborhood; that with the deficiency in parking, the petitioner has failed to demonstrate that the site has the capacity to accommodate a full-service restaurant with live entertainment and outdoor seating; that the proposed use would unduly tax and conflict with the established and normal traffic flow of the area and would cause parking problems on nearby streets and for other businesses in the area; that the proposal conflicts with the spirit and the intent of the zoning ordinance to promote improvement and encourage balanced and appropriate uses; and that the petitioner has failed to comply with all the concerns deemed necessary for the safety and welfare of the city and its residents.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to recommend a denial from Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mrs. McQ. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, and the secretary's ready, please call the roll on the motion to deny.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McQ.
Aye.
Care Magna votes aye. Chair will show.
Votes aye, motion passes. This is a recommendation that is, been made, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Is that correct, Mr. Toramina?
That is correct.
Okay, very good, thank you. And with that, we will, this is a companion item on our agenda, item number three.
Petition 2022-03-02-06 submitted by the Rose Entertainment Venue LLC requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.22 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance to utilize a Class C liquor license, which is the sale of beer, wine, and spirits for consumption on the premises in connection with the operation of a new full-service restaurant at 27494 Grand River Avenue located on the north side of Grand River between Inkster and Eight Mile Roads in the northeast quarter of Section 1.
Thank you, Mr. Care Magna, and Mr. Toramina?
Mr. Chairman, since this is, as you mentioned, a companion petition to the item we just reviewed, I would just look for the commission to make a resolution at this time.
Okay, yes, we, we got background information on this already, and the letters, the correspondence also addressed the Class C license, so
Correct.
I think we're in good shape there. Is there any questions for our planning staff from any of our commissioners? Anyone, does our petitioner want to come forward to speak regarding the Class C license specifically? Okay. Anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone coming forward. So if that's, if there's no other comments or questions from anybody, I can safely close the public hearing, and I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Smiley.
In light of the previous petition, I would like to make a denying resolution that the request to utilize a Class C liquor license in connection with the operation of a new full-service restaurant at 27494 Grand River Avenue is hereby denied for the following reasons: That the petitioner failed to affirmatively show that the proposed utilization of the Class C liquor license at this location would comply with the general waiver use standards and requirements as set forth in Section 6.22 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance; that the location fails to comply with the standards of Section 6.22, which requires a separation of at least 1,000 feet between Class C liquor license establishments; that this part of the city is currently well-served with Class C liquor license establishments selling alcohol beverages; that it has not been demonstrated there's a need in this area for an additional sale, sales of alcohol beverages such as permitted by the utilization of a Class C liquor license; and that the petitioner has not sufficiently demonstrated that the utilization of the Class C liquor license at this location would be compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding uses in the area; and that the proposal is contrary to the goals and objectives of the zoning ordinance, which, among other things, are intended to ensure suitability and appropriateness of uses.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Is there support?
Support.
And we have, again, a motion to deny by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mrs. McQ. Any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McQ.
Aye.
Care Magna votes aye. Chair will show.
Votes aye, motion passes, and it's a motion to deny. The petitioner, again, will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Thank you for coming this evening, and we will note that Mr. Long is returning to the dais at 7:44 PM for our minutes. And we can now move on to item number four on our agenda.
Rule four is petition 2022-03-02-07 submitted by Clover Self-Storage requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.58 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance to operate a truck and trailer rental business in conjunction with an existing climate-controlled indoor self-storage facility and outdoor storage yard for recreational vehicles at 28,900 Schoolcraft Road, located on the north side of Schoolcraft between Inkster and Middlebelt Roads in the southwest quarter of Section 24.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. Again, this is a request to operate a U-Haul truck and trailer rental business in conjunction with Clover Storage, which is on the north side of Schoolcraft, just east of Middlebelt Road. This property is about five and a half acres. It has 846 feet of frontage on Schoolcraft and an average depth of 285 feet. The zoning is M1 light manufacturing. Waiver use approval was granted to Clover Storage in 2016. The existing facility is two stories in height and totals approximately 112,000 square feet. Outdoor storage of RVs is provided in the fenced-in parking lots, which are to the west and the east of the existing building. Truck and trailer rental facilities require separate waiver use approval under the provision set forth in Section 6.58 of the zoning ordinance. The revised site plan shows seven, parking for seven U-Haul vehicles, which would be along the north property line, directly behind the building. The distance from the rear of the building to the separation wall is approximately 34 feet. Parking for the trucks and trailers will, would require probably 10 feet, and that would leave 24 feet for the two-way drive aisle. The proposed U-Haul storage spaces are located within the secured part of the site, which is not currently used for parking. Space for approximately three trucks is also available adjacent to the concierge island, which is on the west side of the building, excuse me, the east side of the building, for vehicles that are returned after hours. No existing parking spaces designated for either customers or employees would be affected by the U-Haul operation, and no other site changes or improvements, including to the elevation of the building or the site's landscaping, are proposed as part of this petition. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll read out the correspondence.
Please.
First is a letter from the Engineering Division dated March 14th. They indicate that the existing building is currently serviced by public water main sanitary sewer, as well as private storm sewer. According to the proposed plans, there would not be any impacts to the sanitary sewer or water main. Should the developer need to make revisions to the existing leads or do any work within the Schoolcraft Road right-of-way, they will need to submit engineering drawings to this department to determine if permits will be required. That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. We have a letter dated March 17th coming from the Division of Police indicating no objection, and that letter is signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from Livonia Fire and Rescue dated March 31st that reads, "We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations: Vehicles parked in spaces shall not interfere with the function of the sliding gates; vehicles parked in spaces shall not obstruct fire department apparatus, access to fire hydrants, fire department connection, or other drive areas where building access is needed. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." That letter is signed by Brian Kokla, Senior Fire Inspector. Next, a letter of no objection from the Inspection Department dated April 1st, and signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. We have a letter of no objection from the Department of Finance dated March 15th, and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. Next is a letter from the Office of the Treasurer, revised April 11th, that reads, "In accordance with your request, the Treasurer's Office has reviewed the above referenced petition. At this time, there are no delinquent taxes due, therefore, and I have no objections to this proposal." That letter is signed by Linda Sheil, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. And lastly, we have an email correspondence from a resident that reads, "As a resident in this neighborhood for over 30 years, and therefore impacted by this proposal, I object to the additional rental business for trucks and trailers. As I recall, this rental business was mentioned in the original proposal and rejected. Now that the storage business is in place and construction is completed, it is brought up again. The current proposal adds more traffic to the service drive, and placement of the equipment on the site will clearly be along the wall adjacent to the homes along the barrier wall. This wall, or this will, also require additional security lighting, not currently installed, therefore, the additional lighting that will be of a height that it that it will be, that it will cover above and add more lighting into our backyards along the aforementioned wall. For these reasons, I implore the Planning Commission not to approve this waiver, consider the families and property of your affected residents. Thank you." And the, um, sender is, uh, Thomas Walls nine at AOL dot com. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions from our commissioners for our planning staff? Mr. Long?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Toramina, according to the resident, this was brought up previous, or one we initially approved. This, I don't recall U-Haul being contemplated.
You know, when I, we received this email, I failed to mention, on March thirtieth, and when I received it and read it, I did go back and take a look at the minutes, and I did not see discussion
Yeah, okay.
uh, regarding, um, uh, this type of operation at that time.
Okay, I, I didn't recall anything other. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good question, thank you. Any other questions for our planning staff, Ms. Smiley?
Yes, I see that there's no parking out in front now. It, the, the U-Haul trucks are in the back?
Yes, so the new plan that we received shows, um, all of the, uh, storage, uh, behind the building. Uh, this is adjacent to the wall, as was indicated. Um, I've also highlighted this area near the Concierge Island as being the best location more possibly for returning, uh, vehicles. Uh, it was originally shown uh, as a location for the storage of some of the vehicles. Um, so, on a temporary basis, this would probably be a good spot for those, uh, vehicles when they, when they are returned and when there's no other spaces available along the side of the building.
Okay, and then my second question is, are a, a lot of additional lighting in the back now?
They're not showing any additional lighting, uh, as part of this proposal. Uh, how it affects, how, how the existing lighting affects, uh, the neighbors to the, to the north, I, I'm not aware of any issues.
Okay. The only, yeah, so the, oh, I guess my question is that it's just basically moving these seven trucks to the back of the storage unit, right?
That's correct.
And it should not, should it have any impact on the residents behind there that you know?
You'll recall that in addition to, um, the five to seven-foot-high screen wall, masonry wall that's back there, uh, they, I believe this area has an extended, um, screen. Um, does that include the area directly behind the building? I'm, I'm looking at the petitioner. I'll let him respond when his time is due. I, I do know that there are areas of the site where we extended the screen uh, up much higher, uh, than just the wall, and, and this may be, this may be one of those areas. I don't know if it extended all the way across, uh, the back or not.
Oh, Mark, also, they're U-Haul vans, and if you've seen them, they're, they're lower, and the impact, average, um, average, uh, storage company gets one customer a day, very low impact. They approached us because of the visibility and because of the, uh, access to the freeway, and our customers use U-Haul to bring their belongings there, and it's very good for them to rent it there. So, U-Haul approached us. We had no intention of U-Haul, but we had so many U-Haul people asking us and the customers, it, it made a lot of sense, and so you'll average one, the traffic could be one customer a day, one, and, and they said that's high volume. We, we get one customer a day, average, uh, storage customers about thirty a month, average, so it's so low impact, there's plenty of parking, and there will be absolutely no disturbance whatsoever.
And can we just get your name and address for our record?
Uh, Kelly Denham, a partner, and my na- uh, address, four two six three Sedgmore Lane, Bloomfield.
Thank you, Mr. Denham. And we just wanna make sure that we know who we're speaking to.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, you did hear a question that was asked, uh, specifically regarding the height of the wall. Is that true that there's a-
You know, I can't honestly ask. I, I can't answer that. I don't know exactly. But I, I could tell you that a lot of them are vans, which are very low and, and it's below. Now, there is some trucks that are higher, and I don't know if they're visible. But, you know, I mean, if they want, we could put a few of the higher ones in the front, but we approached, uh, Mark, and Mark, we gave him two plans. Do you want them up front? And, uh, to our preference, our preference is up front, because we want customers at Schoolcraft to see U-Haul vans there. Hey, I can rent a U-Haul there. But, um, Mark, and we thought, it's fine, we, we're gonna get a little sign, we'll have brochures to put them in the back so that they're not visible from the road.
Okay, thank you for, uh, answering that. Is there any other questions from any commissioners for our petitioner now that he's been introduced? No questions?
Mr. Chairman. What, what is the total amount of vehicles? How many?
Seven.
Seven, seven U-Haul vehicles?
Yeah.
How many vans? How many trucks?
You know, I can't answer that. I can tell you what, what I, they told me that it's half and half. Three and, three and four, uh, because a lot of people don't, you know, they just, I, I saw that the vans were, you can, there's no way you can see the vans. But there are some trucks, but they're not semi-trucks. They're, you know, they're larger than the vans.
And I would think that, that the vans are probably more popular than anything these days.
Much, much more popular. They're so easy to drive, everyone's not intimidated by driving them. That's exactly right.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karamagna. Any other questions for our petitioner? If not, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anybody rushing forward. I have to, have to offer that. Uh, Mr. Denham, is there anything else that you wanna add before we make our decision?
I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, I will close the public hearing and a motion is in order.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McHugh?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that the request to operate a truck and trailer rental business in conjunction with an existing climate-controlled indoor self-storage facility at two nine one five zero Seven Mile is approved. Is that correct?
No.
Doesn't that sound correct? No, it's not Seven Mile.
Am I looking at the other one? Okay.
No, that was, uh,
It's a two-
carryover from the other one, so.
Two thou- uh, twenty-
Just change the address.
Twenty-eight thousand nine hundred Schoolcraft.
Yep.
It's wrong, yeah. Yep, I mean, I just, okay.
We'll note the address is twenty-eight thousand nine hundred Schoolcraft.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. The rest should be fine.
Yeah, two eight nine zero zero Schoolcraft Road. Okay. Located on the north side of Schoolcraft Road between Inkster and Middle Belt Roads in the southwest one quarter of section twenty-four, uh, is hereby approved, subject to city council approval in the following conditions. That the outdoor storage of U-Haul trucks, vans, and trailers shall be limited to the following designated areas. Three spaces located adjacent to the Concierge Island with a setback of at least a hundred feet from the Schoolcraft Road right-of-way, and seven spaces in the secured parking lot behind the building. No U-Haul trucks, vans, or trailers shall be stored in the parking spaces along the west side of the building. Such spaces shall be reserved and used solely for the customers and employees, and any U-Haul trucks, vans, or trailers which are returned and parked on the west side of the building after hours shall be promptly moved by ten A.M. to one of the approved designated parking spaces. That the total number of rental trucks, vans, trailers available at this location shall not exceed ten.
I thought it was seven.
I thought it was seven. Correct?
No, I, I think that-
Are we, are we counting the Concierge spaces?
All the ones, okay.
Plus the seven in the back?
Yeah, well, those were included, yes.
Potential.
So, it should be ten?
Okay.
Okay. That unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or s- or sponsor vehicles designated to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. That there'll be no outdoor storage of auto parts, scrap material, waste petroleum products, junked, unlicensed, or inoperable vehicles or other similar items in connection with this operation. That only conforming signage is approved with this position, petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. And pursuant to section thirteen point thirteen of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by city council, and unless an appropriate permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion made by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Smiley. I believe it's clear as mud to everybody. Is there any questions on that?
That was a test.
Exactly. If everybody's, uh, clear on that, then there's no questions, and they, uh, roll calls in order.
Mrs. McHugh?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman will show.
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to city council and approve your recommendation. Thank you for coming. Good luck. That concludes the public hearing section of our agenda, and we now have, uh, we go on to the miscellaneous side, uh, section of our agenda, and that would be item number five.
That's the approval of the minutes of the one thousand one hundred and eighty-fourth and one thousand one hundred and eighty-fifth. Public hearing and regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on February twenty-second, twenty si- twenty-two and March twenty-second, twenty-two respectively.
The, uh, I took a look back at those minutes for those two meetings. The one thousand one hundred and eighty-fourth, uh, we do have everyone, uh, who was at that meeting present tonight. The one thousand one hundred and eighty, uh, fifth, we do not have, uh, enough to, to approve that, so. Is a motion, a, a motion would be in order for approval of the one thousand one hundred and eighty-fourth.
My move, we approve the minutes of the one thousand one hundred and eighty-fourth.
All right, and we have, uh, support for that?
Support.
Okay, we have Smiley and McHugh for the one thousand one hundred and eighty-fourth minutes. Is there, uh, any objection to showing five on that? I don't see any objections, so we will show five on approving those minutes. And the other ones will be, uh, moved to our next meeting. Hopefully, we can get those approved then. Uh, and that, uh, ends the agenda for tonight. Is there any other business to come before the Planning Commission? If there's no other business, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long, supported by-
Karen Magna.
Karen Magna's gonna get one in tonight.
Yeah, you have a scoreboard somehow.
So, it's a motion to adjourn by, uh, Long and Karen Magna, and again, if there's no objections, I think we can safely show five on that. And, uh, thank you for that. Uh, this, uh, does conclude our meeting for tonight. Uh, I do wanna thank Livonia Television staff for their contribution to bringing this meeting to the community, and we will adjourn this meeting at eight zero two P.M. and wish, uh, good night to Livonia.